Public Health, Safety, Judiciary Ethics Committee. Roll call please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Here.
Alderman Curialy?
Here.
Alderman Messina, not here. Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Sismarski?
Here.
Alderman Ames, not here. Alderman Artiwoods?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Have a quorum. I'll make a motion to approve the October 26, 2023 Public Health, Safety, Judiciary, and Ethics Committee minutes for a second.
Second.
Any comments, questions, corrections? Be none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So we have one item of business tonight. The Flock Safety Automatic License Plate Reader Contract Extension and Expansion. Chief, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, so in 2022, we signed a two-year agreement with Flock for 23 ALPR license plate readers. Today, 20,000, three have been installed and are on the run. We're still determining whether you're in cameras. They had an old Flock increase their pricing from $2,500 a camera to $3,000 per camera. That will take effect when we renew our next contract. In the meantime, they've offered us a five-year extension agreement to lock in our current pricing of $2,500 per camera for the next five years if we sign a new agreement before summer 31st of this year. And speaking with them, based on council feedback, inquiring on possibly adding more cameras, I asked them to give me an option and a recommendation on how many cameras they recommend and locations for those cameras. They came back recommending 15 new cameras be installed with various locations throughout town that we can go through if you'd like to see the locations.
I got a question.
Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, so what is the price on that, chief?
So if you go with option one, just extending our current cameras for five years locked in at $2,500 per camera, it'll save us $11,500 per year for a total of $57,500 over the five-year period. Option two, with the recommendation of adding 15 cameras, it would add a first year cost of $104,250 and a year two through five costs of $98,500 per year. So that would be a total five-year agreement for 38 cameras, just under $500,000.
Okay. And do we have any form of grants out there that can help this program?
There are no grants at this time for ALPR cameras.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for option two.
Second.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yeah, chief, I noticed in the diagrams, there's nothing in the industrial area or the expanded future projects on 83 and unincorporated area.
So right now...
So you're saying 15, you're saying 15 new ones, but I don't see anything in the expanded area along 83 or along Thorne, South Thorne.
You're talking right around this...
Well, South Thorne, anything up on South Thorne under 390, anything along 83 on access road?
So we have one here at Liveing 390. We've got one right up here at Thorn Dale, Washingtonville Dale Road. But actually, in the industrial parts here, the only way you're going to get in is either coming through the middle of town or passing these cameras up here. But you're right, we do not have anything right now off of 83 and Brimar or the future.
Right.
I guess there's a proposal way up here in this area.
So I guess...
Go ahead.
So I guess my, my proposal would be to expand out of the 15. I mean, I would... There's going to be somebody up here, any one of us Aldermen will sit here and say, 15's not enough. And four years down the road, there might be new Aldermen up here that want more, but we're going to have to pay the, the price higher than whatever you said it was going to go to. So I would, I would amend, I would ask for an amendment and motion to Alderman Catalanos to go to at least 25 to 30.
Chief?
So anything over the 15, I figure you would be adding $2,500 per camera.
Good sir.
Mayor? Go ahead. Hi. Alderman Woods?
Thank you. So I would not be one of the guys adding 30 cameras. Won't come as a surprise. Although we may need some, or they may be needed in other locations, at a certain point, one is enough enough cameras. So we have to look at that. And if I look, when I was looking at this, I also looked at the other communities. Everybody else, the cameras are proliferating. So there becomes a redundancy between Elk Grove, Vitaska, Bensonville, the border communities. And to your point that you just made, that in the industrial section, there's two or three cameras that cover it to get in and out. Can't we do the same thing in the rest of the city so that we get adequate coverage without getting too carried away and going 30, 40, 50 cameras? Because that not only, in my opinion, gets ridiculous, but it gets really expensive. So when I looked at, as a comparative, looking to Elk Grove, they seem to have it more as a box containment detail. If I looked at it, I didn't overanalyze it, but just visually looking at it, seemed like they got their coverage by hitting the corners and big areas, much like you were talking about, that area is covered because we have a camera there, a camera there, a camera there, that you can't get in and out. So I would ask you to look at it and go, how do we get the best coverage? I know that this is Flock's recommendation, but they sell cameras, right? That's what they do. So they're always going to recommend more cameras. That's not a surprise. And it's not a surprise, after only 10 months into the contract, they come out and want to raise the price 20%. And then magically come with a discount so you've signed a five-year contract. So I won't burden us with all that tonight. But just that we make a conscious effort to look at it and minimize the number of cameras, but desire the fact that we're, we're looking for, not just go haphazardly, throw up an extra 30 cameras. There's some concerns that other Aldermen have or locations that aren't covered, let's cover them. I'm not going to argue it, but let's not put them up for the sake of putting up cameras.
Chief?
Yeah, so based on their recommendation, looking at their location, I don't have any issues or concerns of what they recommended. Speaking to some of you, I would actually like to see, I agree with Alderman Sismarski about that new area that's going to be incorporated shortly, but I'd like to see one here getting on at 390 and one over here going east on the 390 so that we, we do have some criminal activity. We're knowing exactly if they're getting into town, getting out of town, especially when that 390 is finished and connects to, I believe it's going to be the 490 going down York Road and eventually the 294. So based on them coming back with 15, looking at it myself, my personal opinion would be maybe 20, a max of 20 right now to cover those additional areas.
Was there a comment?
My next comment's math.
Okay.
Let everybody talk about the cameras.
Mayor, please.
So the cameras, $2,500 covers the camera, the installation, and...
No. The installation's extra, correct?
So the $2,500 is the cost of each camera. There is an installation and professional services cost in the first year.
Oh, that was the $100,000?
It's the $104,250 in the first year, and subsequent years are $98,500.
What do you mean subsequent years? Another $98,000, they're not installing them then?
So...
Oh, you're talking about the reoccurring fees?
Sure.
Right. Right now, it's $61,000, right? There's a lot of numbers flying around. And $98,000, if you add 15 cameras, that's what we pay every year for the service to send all the information to our squad cars. The install...
Okay.
Yeah, correct. It's just that first year, there's a professional services fee for installing those additional cameras.
And I, we probably discussed this the last time. How long are these cameras good for? What's their shelf life? I mean, it's a camera, so it's not a digital computer, but it's recording. What happens if it's gone in three years? It's shot. Do we get a new one? We got to buy a new one? I forgot.
Chief?
So we're not buying those cameras, we're leasing the cameras from them, so they're changing them out anytime there's an issue. We've had a couple situations where the current solar panels that are installed by cameras haven't been enough, so they've had to swap out those panels to give us bigger, stronger panels with longer lasting batteries.
Right.
There's no additional cameras for any of that.
And I know I, I noticed the one at Oak Meadows and 83, the pole was pointing up into the air with the camera. I called it in, somebody hit it? How could they hit it? We didn't even have snow yet. And it should be going the other way if it was snow. But on Oak Meadows Drive, so you have them coming in off 83, you don't have them come in and off of Wooddale Road. So if we're covering the perimeters, I mean, we got two on, on Irving Park Road and Wooddale Road where we're covering those perimeters already. Why not take one of those Irving Park cameras and put it on the west end, basically by that church, right? That's our coming, coming eastbound. We got two on Irving Park and Wooddale Road, I believe. I saw two new ones. And I know we got, we're covered on Irving Park east and west already, and we're covered on Wooddale Road north and south. I just, we're adding two more, and I wasn't quite sure why two more right there is their recommendation. Like Alderman Woods said, I'm selling, I'm selling cameras, I'm going to sell you as many as I can. But we're missing, so I know next year, they're going to come, well, you know, we need to cover this perimeter, they're going to start adding some more. Right?
Chief?
So outside of covering the borders and the entrances to town, their recommendations on interior cameras are based on traffic data and crime data that they analyze.
Mayor?
And I know I've spoken to you about this already, chief, but the, what, what value are we getting out of these? I know you've told me some report of stolen cars and whatnot. Can we expound on that a little bit?
Yeah, so today, from what we've tracked, and we're trying to come up with a better system of how we track, to make sure every time we have success with a Flock camera, that the officers are properly logging them in, so we know about it. But today, 2023, we've got 14 criminal cases in the south due to Flock cameras. We've got seven recovered stolen motor vehicles from the Flock cameras. We have five criminal arrests utilizing the Flock cameras, and we have three missing persons that have been found utilizing the Flock cameras.
Missing persons?
Yeah. So if we have a missing person in a vehicle, you'll put that vehicle into a hot list, and you'll get an alert that that missing person in that vehicle is coming to your town. So in the last 30 days, because we only keep 30 days with the data, we've had just over 1.2 million plate reads from our 20 cameras in town with 222,000 of those plate reads being unique plate reads. So the 1.2 million is counting, you know, you might have a vehicle that has six different cameras in Wooddale, but in the last 30, 30 days, we've had 222,000 unique plate reads. Of those reads in the last 30 days, 36 have been categorized as known gang members or suspected terrorists that are on a hot list with that license plate. Three have been sex offenders. Seventeen have been stolen plates. Nineteen have been stolen vehicles, and three are subjects that had warrants that those plates have been activated for.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, so you had mentioned that there will, we're still waiting on some licensing or something for three cameras. What is that from the state or who's that from overall rate?
Chief, go ahead.
So the first one is IDOT at Irving Prospect that has just been taking forever. But I actually got some permitting paperwork from them last week, so hopefully we'll see that installation in the next couple of months. The second location we're waiting on is Irving Pine, which is again IDOT. And the third location was slated for Deer Cap and 83, but they ran into some underground utility issues, so we're going to have to relocate that camera, and we're going to try to keep it on Deer Cap, but closer to the intersection better.
All right, Peter.
As far as with the new ones that they suggested, do we foresee any problems with, like I know you mentioned going on the Thorn Dale, would, would that kind of be wanting to a lot of permission from IDOT to put those in?
Chief?
Yeah, so any, any additional cameras, we're going to have the same permitting requirements. So depending on if it's the township, or the county, or the state. Township was pretty quick, if the county IDOT or something.
All right, Peter.
Is there any reason that they ever turn, have ever turned one down or not given a secret licensing agreement?
Chief?
They've had some right-of-way issues where we may have had to move it a few feet, but nothing major. Thank you.
Alderman Catalano, do you have anything?
Does this system interact with our licensed reader on our squad cars?
Chief?
It does not. It's a separate system through a different vendor, so those two systems do not interact, but they are reading from the same hot lists.
Okay. Alderman Woods?
Thank you.
Artwoods?
There you go. I just want to touch on some of the dollars now. So from the initial two-year contract we signed, I'm assuming it was the same as the one that we're going to sign for the extra ones, where they charge you for the install, that's paid upfront. A year's paid upfront in advance for the cameras, I'm assuming that stayed the same. So my question is, what, do we get a credit for not having three cameras running or installed for the term of the prior contract?
Chief, can I respond?
Yeah, they won't invoice us until the first camera is installed, and they have given us credit since this past two years where they did not bill us when they should have. It was a certain percentage of cameras installed, but they had clerical error where they actually didn't bill us for the first payment of the last month.
But we're not paying for the 23 cameras, we're only paying for 20 cameras?
Correct, that's my understanding.
Okay. And then since we, well, we kind of talked about the permitting issue, so I'm assuming that the next 15 are going to take the same amount of time or have the same recurrence of issues with, with permitting. But when I was adding up the, the numbers where you guys came up with $498,250, I only got $480,750. If I look from the original contract, where you, you guys added 305, that, that only added up to 287.5, unless I missed something. I tried to, I know they have the tier fee, which is going to be one of my next questions, right? They have the install fee, and then they have that 3,500 second tier fee, but I added that in. 35 times 2,500 plus 5,750. I mean, maybe we can go over the math offline to, to go through it, just that and so my next question on the math, the second tier fee of 3,500, I think it's a nice level of information you're able to get for better querying of the system? Is that what that is for?
Chief?
Yeah, that's the advanced software search fee approved, so that's the software licensing fee for us to have the ability to do advanced searches through their software platform.
But the advanced searches, they're over and above just normal software search?
Chief?
Correct. It gives us the ability to, let's say we have a vehicle that doesn't have a registration on the vehicle like it should, but it's got a distinguishing feature like a, let's say a fenton bumper sticker. We can do camera searches throughout their network based on that vehicle description alone.
Okay, so that gives you the round four, decal, missing plate, all those other options that you can throw.
Correct.
Next question, are, so are we reciprocal in allowing all the other communities to use our information as they allow us to use theirs?
Go ahead.
We are.
That was it.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, chief, you had mentioned that since releasing them, like they'll come out and change it out if there's a problem with it. What if technology changes in the next five years, will they come out and put new upgraded cameras out, or do they keep the cameras that are here?
I will have to get back to you on that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, are, is there any difference between the cameras, those cameras, like the functionality of those cameras versus the ones on squad cars? Do they do the same thing, or is there, does technology, does that's been on the squad car for maybe three, four years now? One?
No, I think that one on the squad car's probably been there at least eight years now. So that's probably a pretty outdated camera, and we've, I'm not sure to say we're getting more accurate and detailed quadrants on these Flock cameras. Thank you.
Mayor?
Chief, I'm going to ask a question about, so being, I don't, I don't believe we had an additional 15 cameras in the budget, or is that going to be like a budget discussion for this coming year?
Chief? Mr. Wilson?
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I was speaking with Chief Zito about this before, that was one of my first questions. And as he agreed, he stated that we would not be invoiced until the first camera goes in. I believe I'll speak for chief, but if he has stated that based upon the timelines and the permitting, that that would be until after we first, in any regard. And so it would be something that we would include in this year's budget based upon the decision made tonight, later next Thursday.
Yeah, I have to follow. So, I mean, we're talking about adding 15, one of the Aldermen said maybe 25 or 30. How much is too much? I'm going to be right along, you know? So honestly, I always defer to the police chief for this kind of stuff. So 15, I think we start getting to 30 more. I don't know, it might be overkill.
Chief?
What, what's your thoughts?
Based on their recommendation and discussion tonight, I would recommend we go with 20 in total to cover the additional gaps that have been pointed out.
All right. Mayor?
Again, so what they pointed out now, but I'm the camera guy, I'm going to sell, I want to sell you. So you know what? I've looked it over and, you know, Bensonville really didn't do this, Elk Grove didn't do that, Addison didn't do that, Vitaska didn't do that. Maybe you guys should get another 10.
Go ahead, chief.
I'll tell you, if they have not come to me trying to sell any cameras, this question of adding them was me going to them based on council feedback that I got.
Okay.
If they have not come to me at all, then we think you should add more.
Just checking.
Alderman Artwoods?
I was going to say, we could probably fund the cameras with marijuana money, cannabis money, if we get that going. I think that's covered under those rules too, maybe, right? So then we don't have to worry about the 15 or 20 cameras. I'm just saying.
Anything else? Do you have a motion and a second? Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, I would ask that Tony, I mean, I seconded it, that Tony changed it to 20 based on the chief's recommendation.
Agreed.
Second. I agree as well.
We have amended motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
I'm a no.
Alderman Curialy?
No.
Alderman Messina, not here. Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Artiwoods?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
So we have a tie? Fails. Okay. No, no mayor vote? Okay. Mr. Murvis?
Typically, one non-CDC items that require law closure, I would call it a committee, it's not going to advance to council, so we'll leave the rationale behind. Just go about trying.
Wait.
Or mayor can break the tie.
No, I, I don't, I don't vote today.
You can.
But, no. Mad committee, I was told, no.
Mr. Murvis?
Uh, hold on, but... So I was told. Anyways, needs to come forward if we're going to, because our contract's expiring, so something's got to come forward anyways. We make a...
Push it to the council.
Right? We still need the contract for the cameras, the original cameras anyways, don't we?
That's why I said we should make another motion, and we'll get a positive vote, and we'll go.
Alderman Woods?
As much as it pains me, I'll make a motion to continue the contract at the local, to get the discounted rate.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
No.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Artiwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Items be considered at future meetings. Police Department remodel on January 11th. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
The move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned?
Aye. Okay, calling the Public Works Committee to order. Let the minute take note, the same people are here. Make a motion to approve the minutes from October 26, 2023, Public Works Committee meeting.
The move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, approval of a proposal from Bear Construction for the Public Works Fitness and IT Area Improvements in an amount not to exceed $47,000. That would be my motion.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Lang?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to take this opportunity to give an update on the project. Phases one and two are both substantially complete. The only item remaining of any significance is the trade elevator at the 720 building. All the trade work associated with that is in place, so it's really just a matter of the elevator company coming in and installing the equipment. That'll be done in January, so we don't expect any major changes associated with that work. Having said that, there's about $250,000 in contingency funds remaining within the budget. These are funds that were budgeted for unforeseen circumstances that might arise during construction. If those are not needed, then that money will not be expensed by the city. So given that we're nearing the end here and we have those funds available, we are requesting some additional work items be done that were not included in the original scope. One is before you tonight, is partitioning of whole areas, one for a fitness area in the back of the 790 building, and one for an IT area to protect some data racking that's in the mezzanine at 790. Another item that will likely be forthcoming is the flooring at 720 garage. It's deteriorating critically from the salt and wear and tear from the trucks. We have received an alternative bid to epoxy that, but there was some concern with how long that would hold up, with the wear and tear from the trucks. So we decided to scrap that idea, and I think our money might be a little bit better spent by removing, replacing some of the worst sections of concrete. So we'll likely be receiving proposals for that work and bringing it forward here sometime in the near future. The only other item that may come up is the vestibule doors at the 790 building, we've been having some issues. We've retrofitted them, they were existing doors with our keyless entry system, and we've been having some trouble leading them to lash rockaway. So we're hoping that we have it resolved this week, if there's a chance that that might come up at some point in the future.
Mayor, go ahead.
The IT area in the vestibule, I take it it's going to be an enclosed room, right? It's, because it's pretty dusty in that building with the trucks back and forth.
Dr. Lang?
Correct, yeah, we're closing the area around the data racking in the mezzanine, so it's a perfect area. so it's a perfect area to look at.
Okay, I have a question as well, for the fitness area, was that something, I can't really remember, was that something the police department was going to use as well, or no? Go ahead.
That's correct, so we received a grant for $30,000 through our safety program, which we're going to use to buy some equipment, the police through their renovation is going to donate some equipment to us as well, and then it'll be available for any city employee that wants to use it.
Okay, and then with, with that, I mean, do you guys, will you guys have enough equipment with both Public Works and the police using it?
Yeah, with the $30,000 and the equipment coming from the police department, we feel we have a pretty good start for anybody to go and use it.
Okay.
There'll also be, if I can speak for the chief, there'll still be a smaller fitness area here at the police department.
Woods?
A little of humor, do we have enough for a gym or a swimming pool to add to that facility over there?
We may, there's a fair amount of contingency left, but we're trying to go with just the basic needs at this point.
Which leads me to my actual question, so how did we wind up with that when I know that we had a bunch of extras that were added into the job, did we not take them out of contingents, like the generator, and there were some other things?
Correct, they were added in addition to the contingency, the contingency was always in there, it was 5% of the overall construction cost, and then those items that were alternatives were added on top of that.
Okay, so then, all right, that's what I thought, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Hartwoods?
I don't know, there's no pool, uh, yes.
Be boozy.
Alderman Curielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Artiwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next, items to be considered at future meetings, Elizabeth Drive Bridge, Phase Two Engineering, January, do we have anything else to go on there? I would actually, I think this would be the spot to add, I know years ago we talked about like adding additional like Christmas and holiday decorations, would we need to discuss that here, or would that just come during budget time?
Finance.
Yeah, we could conclude that as an expanded level budget item, top budget here.
Okay. Would that, make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Okay, finance and administration, since the chair and the vice chair are out, let the minute take note that same members are still present, need a motion to approve the minutes of November 9, 2023.
The move.
All in, comments, questions, or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. First up, report and recommendation, 2023 Audit Report, this sounds very exciting. Mr. Wilson? Oh, I'm sorry.
So now that you're acting as the chair, can you vote?
I believe not, I was told no.
Could you?
Mr. Murmice, can I get a rolling? I don't know, I'm turning, I thought he could, so.
Could, could he actually?
I thought he could too, so I just...
Could he actually read?
I'm going to double check again, but I remember the attorney telling me...
I don't think you could run the meeting, though.
No, no, I can, that I can.
Will you go wait in the back?
Go ahead, who's going to take the lead, Mr. Murmice or Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, I'm just trying to figure out this version of...
Could it be possibly the icons on the bottom right there?
Um, show the screen for the mic. Figure out the second. Anyways, thank you, Mr. Mayor, as we do every year, we do an audit presentation, the auditors come up, do a brief presentation, report on the results of the city operations for the year, again, this year, as we did last year, we have Mr. Nick Baba, for the minutes, that's B-A-B-A, partner with Sigich, we've done the engagement for now, it was seven years, two years ago we did the partner operation, Mr. Baba's been with us the last couple of years, so if that, it's okay, we'll be back in the chair, I'll turn it over to Mr. Baba.
Go ahead.
Good evening, thank you to the mayor and committee for am here tonight to present the results of the city's audit as of April 30, 2023, so ultimately, as part of the audit process, we issue a handful of reports for your review and approval, I highlight some items out of the annual comprehensive financial report which we see in front of you tonight, that's your audit report, we'll be happy to address any questions committee might have related to this year's audit. First page we'll start on is Roman New World, read. So this is a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, this was most recently issued for the fiscal year end of April 30, 2022, I wanted to point this out to the committee, this represents the city going above and beyond minimum reporting requirements set by economic accounts statutes and set by generally accepted accounting principles, so ultimately, this report for you tonight is prepared in the spirit of full disclosure, accountability, and transparency to residents, users, anyone interested in the financial position of the city, so I just wanted to congratulate the city for continuing to go through this elective, this is the 36th award, 36th certificate received, and we expect that once this 2023 report is submitted and reviewed, that the city will receive the 37th award. Page number one is the next section that we'll cover, which is the independent auditor's report. So the independent auditor's report is our opinion on the financial statements, the results of the audit, what's nice is front and center is, are those two paragraphs that articulate our opinion on these financial statements, and what these two paragraphs essentially document is that we've issued an unmodified opinion on these financial statements, that is a clean opinion, and it's the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can provide as part of the fiscal year end audit. Following that paragraph, which is a change in accounting principle paragraph, every year, we're required to evaluate accounting policies and standards adopted by the governmental accounting standards board GASB, in the case of this fiscal year, there was a new accounting standard related to leases, lease accounting, very similar to what occurred in the commercial forecoft at the GASB side, we had to look at any and all lease agreements outstanding for the city, whether it's on the less east side or the less or side, in the case of Wooddale and as the most municipalities that we work with, cell tower agreements were the most applicable under this standard, so looking at cell tower agreements with AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, American Tower, there's now a lease receivable on your financial statements associated with those contracts, as they're very long contracts, and the expected collections over those agreements, so no, no application to our opinion related to this accounting principle, just wanted to point out to the committee that we evaluate these policies every year, and the city makes a net accord. On page number two. So this page articulates the division of responsibility as it relates to management and thus is the independent auditor, it's important to remember that it's management's role to develop these financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, our roles, the auditor, is to develop an opinion on those financial statements, we're governed by standards set by the Americans to certify public accounts and by GASB, governmental accounting standards board, so important to distinct the level of responsibility there between management and independent auditor. On the last page, page number four, this final paragraph of the auditor, the auditor's report, title of the reporting requirement, government auditing standards, this sometimes will be included in the opinion, this relates to compliance related to the fiscal year audit, as the committee knows, anytime a government spends greater than $750,000 in federal grant money, they have to go to what we call undergo a single audit, so in the case of fiscal year end 2023, the city spent roughly $1.26 million in federal grant awards, of that, the major programs, about $926,000 related to the year, so went through compliance tests and then processes associated with that grant award, please report that the city received clean opinions associated with that single audit, and that's what that paragraph refers, that separate report to. Pages five and six are an extension of that same single audit, this is an independent auditor's report in compliance with government auditing standards, page number six documents that as part of the compliance testing we have to do, we did not identify any instances of non-compliance or other matters that were required to report, so all good news as far as the required independent auditor reports included in the document tonight. Next section is on page MDNA1, which is the management discussion and analysis, I won't go through this in great detail, I just always like to point out to the committee that this is a great opportunity for management to provide some context in terms of what occurred during the fiscal year end audit, it's 14 pages long, it provides context and language comparing 2022 to 2023, and always suggests that you review this in conjunction with financial statements yourselves. Making our way into financial statements, pages, page seven is the statement of net position, this is the city's consolidated balance sheet, recorded on the full accrual basis of accounting, this most closely aligns, you know, that with a commercial forecoft and it consolidates by governmental activities, so your, all of your general funds, your fuel tax fund, federal revenue funds, and so on, and it consolidates by business type activities, so these are utilities, or water, sewer, parking, sanitation, overall, it's, as I mentioned, it is recorded on the full accrual basis of accounting, so it captures all of the long-term capital assets, long-term liabilities, things of that nature that you don't necessarily say in your fund financial statement on the panel, chief. The bottom of page seven documents net position, that is your equity, on the, on this basis of accounting, it's organized from least liquid to most liquid, so the net investment in capital asset figure, about $77 million for governmental activities, that's the city's investment in capital assets, less any debt, less any debt that's been issued to acquire those capital assets, same concept for your business type activities at about $27 million, followed by restricted net position, these are, these are net positions that for lack of a better term are restricted for particular purposes, usually it's restricted for fuel tax purposes or for tip purposes, and then finally you have your unrestricted net position, which captures everything else and so on, so that's your statement of net position, next section is on page number nine. This is your statement of activities, this is your long-term income statement, this just, this provides insight as to if the city was better off, better or worse off economically during the fiscal year, when you capture all of these long-term activity changes, depreciation, changes in pensions, additions to capital assets, things of that nature, overall governmental activities at about a 1.5 million decrease in net position, ending net position at $63 million, business type activities, on the contrary, at about a $1.6 million increase in net position, so about $24.5 million at this rate. Those are your long-term financial statements, we'll make our way into the short-term financial statements, and I'll cover just a few items here, page number 10, this is your governmental funds balance sheet, recorded on a different basis of accounting, this is recorded on the modified accrual basis of accounting, and what we call the current resources measurement focus, so it gives you a look that doesn't extend beyond greater than one year, it's organized by what they refer to as major funds, so your major funds are those funds that have a high volume of activity from an asset liability revenue or expenditure perspective, in the case of this fiscal year, your general capital projects and tip number one were your major funds, which is why they have these separate columns here. For your general fund, I always like to point out the unassigned fund balance at the bottom left of the schedule, this is your reserve within the general fund, so just, just rest above 8 million at fiscal year end, when you compare this 8 million to operating expenditures in the general fund during fiscal year 23, it's about 55% reserve, so a little bit over six months of operating expenditures compared to what we're looking at with the office or during fiscal year, board policy has a target of 50%.
Oh, that's right, they're not here. Question, so you just said the amount of cash we have is only 55%, is that's, or...
Correct, but fund balance is, this is your unrestricted fund balance at year end, it's assets in excess of liabilities, so it's not necessarily just cash, but it's, it's what you have from an asset standpoint that exceeds those liabilities as of the end of the fiscal year.
Because, so we always try and stay above six months, my understanding was we were at roughly almost eight months, what's not here that, basically, because I know I asked about these numbers a few months ago, that's not, am I missing something, Brad? Or is, or being we've spent some money and stuff, and now this is where we're at? I just, I like to know the proper numbers.
Yeah, so Mr. Baba said, I mean, there is a difference in cash and the fund balance, you know, if you look here, you know, like, accounts payable, accrued payroll, deposits payable, so those are all things like the accrued payroll, at the end of the year, we have to take that and accrue it back, so, I mean, too far to, you know, Mr. Baba said here, but, you know, accrued payroll, I mean, that's an accounting function, I mean, that's money that's already been spent at the end of the year, but then we have to pull it back in, so at the end of the year, it's a different calculation, just a different accounting standpoint, and literally, how much cash is in the bank versus what the expenses are, it's a different accounting mechanism to get to that number than, you know, just looking at, you know, your cash there. We go, we have this conversation about at least once a year, once every couple of years, just the difference between the fund balance, and then also when you go to the bottom here, that's the unassigned fund balance, you know, if you add in these other fund balances that are here, then the number becomes a decently higher number from a fund balance standpoint as well, of the advanced other funds, prepaid items, which is for insurance, inventory, parts of fuel, and then restricted for public safety, so those items specifically were to DOI technology, court supervision, and I believe some periodic cannabis restrictions are what those funds are going to be used for, so those funds get drawn down for up to year, for when we need to replace the squad cameras, we need to use some sort of related cannabis change or whatnot, we draw on those ones, so the 55% is just this bottom number, it doesn't include any of these top numbers, which those, those monies are available to us huge from a cash standpoint, only for certain purposes, this is money that's, and as it's free and clear, this money has some strings attached to it.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I think you hit it right the first time, accelerated cash burn, but the other, the other numbers we're talking about, they're, with the strings attached, so really, they're somewhat spoken for already, even though they're sitting there, so the true picture is the 8 million, whatever that number is, because I can't read it from there, with the highlighter on it, but my, my question, that was my input on that, but my question goes to debt and liabilities, long-term liabilities, right now at 83,342,000, is that inclusive of the money that we just spent, what, what's the cutoff for this report?
Mr. Wilson, or Mr.?
It's April 30.
April 30, so it would be, all right.
Any other questions? Continue, please.
Thank you. Well, we went to the income statement on page number 12, so this is your income statement for those same governmental funds, revenues over expenditures equating to change in fund balance, looking at the general fund for this fiscal year, pretty much a break-even year, a little bit, a little bit positive change, 133,000, ending fund balance just shy of 9 million, capital projects fund at a beginning fund balance of 563,000, there is a big spend down from a capital perspective, offset with some grant awards that haven't materialized, so overall, ending fund balance after the capital spend down is at a fund balance deficit of 2.1 million. For the tip district number one, tip began paying their principal interest on the 2021 Avons, overall, had a decrease in fund balance associated with their share of the Public Works Building, which you can see is a transfer out into the capital projects fund, overall, that spend down went from 16.3 million to just below 8 million for ending fund balance. Those are your governmental funds, your proprietary income statement is on page 16. So this is, these are the business type activities that I touched on earlier, just separated out by utilities, so your water and sewer operations is a, is a major business type activity, non-major enterprise activities this year are related to sanitation and the commuter parking, those are consolidated in one column on this page, water and sewer operations had an operating income, so charges for services, less operating expenses and depreciation, an operating income of 2.1 million, here in those non-major fund sanitation and parking had an operating loss of 132,000, change in net position for the year when you factor non-operating... Change in net position for the year, when you factor non-operating revenues and any transfers out, $1.7 million for water, and then combined that loss of $130,000 between sanitation and parking. So, that covers the financial element that I wanted to touch on with you all tonight. I just would like to conclude by thanking Brad and Carla for their assistance this year. Please report, we've issued these reports in November. Historically, reports have been issued February, March, and the reports were issued on time this year. Everybody was fantastic for it, but I just want to extend my thanks and gratitude towards Brad, Carla, and their team for very smooth and efficient audit process this year. Again, thank you to the committee and mayor for having me, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Do we have any other questions? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Eric.
Can't let the guy off. The decrease in net position for government activities of $1.5 million, right? And we attribute that to increased expenses related to public safety, not to cameras necessarily, and staffing. Is that a trend that's going to continue to grow? Is that a one-time anomaly thing? Is that a...
Mr. Bava?
How would we...
Or Mr. Wilson?
Let's look at your on the right page. Which page are you on?
I don't know, because you guys have, I have, that's MDA7, packet page 56.
Okay, you're in page 7.
Wait, what page are you on, in our book?
In the packet, it's 56. That's what it says on the page here.
Oh, yeah, all the way up there, okay.
Yep, you just passed it, I believe. Right there. So, the top line, net position for governmental activities decreased?
So, I think to... Let's switch pages, then I'll let Mr. Paul talk.
Sure. I'm here all night.
Page 13 of the book. After the MDNAs you're talking about?
You understand what I'm saying, because it's a substantial number, and so is that a trending thing? Is that going to, next year, are we going to be looking at the same number? Does that number grow, or is...
Just trying to get the right page.
Yeah.
So, it's probably going to be, if you're looking at the new revised target, probably page, we're going to page, I believe, 71. It should be.
Yes, 71. This page is 71.
So, what this, what this page documents is it shows how you derive that $1.5 million dollar loss for governmental activities for the year. So, all the way to the top, $11.5 million of that change in fund balance.
This is page 77?
Seventy. It's page 13 in the book, page 71 in the packet.
Seventeen in the book, 71 in the package, and 45 on the screen.
Yeah, it's, I don't, they're not, we're not matching.
So, this takes the performance for governmental funds before factoring in any of the long-term activities. So, you, for governmental funds for the fiscal year, there's an $11.5 million negative change in fund balance. You touched on capital projects, tip, and so on. Combine those all together, that's where the $11.5 million loss comes from. However, when you capture in all of the capital assets that were capitalized, you can see that, that increases that, you know, that...
Yes, that's right.
$12.4 million, but you have to factor in depreciation expense on those assets, which, you know, decreases that change, $2.5 million. When you look at the, you know, the big changes there, repaying down long-term debt, that's a positive, a million, just a little bit over a million. Net pension liability associated with at least pension money, factor in those actuarial changes for the fiscal year is about $1.5 million negative impact. So, this is the, this is the best page in the report that paints that picture for you as where the $11.5 million dollar loss is derived from.
Okay. Now, that answers.
Go ahead.
I mean, it's good for people to see that that's, how that's broken up. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Wilson?
Let's exclude any or motion to accept for your audit.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay, Alderman Artwoods and Alderman Sismarski, second. Questions, any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Ardi Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalon?
Yes.
And that passes. Thank you. Next item, property casualty, cyber, and workers' compensation insurance renewal for 2024, 2025 calendar year. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's, what we have for you this evening, as you do every year, is our renewal for our, as you say, property casualty, cyber, workers' account insurance. This year, you'll see on, with some of those factors in the packet, are rate one up by 155.5%. A lot of that is driven just strictly by volume, and by volume, I mean, just what things are insured at. And one of the big item, ticket items was we had the 790 building this year. Previously, it was under construction, it was covered under a different policy. Now that the building is complete, it has to come on for a regular insurance policy. Additionally, you probably owe work vehicles cost a little bit more, and they look costly or even more timely to repair than they have been years past, so that also has gone into the equation, and it's like to some increase in the auto liability insurance number. Good things is our workers' count line item has gone down due to losses, or I guess lack of losses of time work. So, we've had a good reporting here, a little bit of workers' count, not a lot of work count cases or anything significant. So, again, five and a half percent. I did speak with our groper earlier today. He said most of their municipal clients are renewed between 7% and 12%. And he said, you know, given the couple of buildings and the vehicle volumes that we've added on, you know, five and a half percent is a pretty good number, and we should be pretty satisfied with that. Also, one other thing to point out, this was a soft marketing year for us. We, every two to three years, do a little bit of a harder press on the market. Did that last year, and this year, kind of take a step back, and if everything looks okay, then roll it over. Some of the logic behind that is if you keep pressing the market every year, and you have a switch, then you kind of become avoidin' press wolf, and you won't have anybody that really takes you seriously, and so then you lose people that might want to bet on your business. So, that's why we do a harder press, and then make a year or two off, and with the market hardening, again, five and a half percent, with the added volumes, especially the increase in our work count, we're pretty happy with that. It's actually lower than what staff have projected with, so that is happy.
Alderman Jacob?
So, Brad, one of the questions, just being that I'm in the business, I mean, I'm seeing municipalities and things, I mean, I'm seeing their values, especially with construction and labor shortages and things, go much higher than five. I mean, I mean, we're seeing people increase 20, 30% in their insured values on their properties. So, are we taking that into account for our buildings and our properties?
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you for mentioning that. I did, we didn't say that. We actually did, Travelers did have a reevaluation of the valuation carrying amount for this building and the police station. They felt it was a little bit low. Staff reviewed what our carrying value was with the insurance company, what their proposed number was, and we concur that it probably was low. That being said, based upon the time that they had told us about it, we didn't have a chance to get our own appraisal, but the appraisal, however, sort of, the appraisal comes out higher than what they were thinking, and we have to pay, and it comes on the way that you can fight it. So, we were not specifically adverse to the number that they provided to us, and so we accepted that. That was on these two main buildings, obviously, the 790, we had the recent bid and renovation costs, so it's pretty easy to assign value to that. Some of the other ancillary buildings, we haven't hit on those yet, with the wellhouses and, you know, booster stations, stuff like that. So, that might be forthcoming, but this year, the main focus was on this and the police station.
Alderman Jacob, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, and I will say, I mean, Travelers, that's one of the carriers that pushes pretty hard, so that's pretty good to know that they didn't, that's, you know. All they said, the only other thing is, and this is something I mentioned at a meeting I was at today with a bunch of municipalities in Wisconsin, is, you know, our company does, like, appraisals of buildings and things, and anytime we do public entities, we find, like, six out of 10 times, they're missing properties on their insurance, on their insurance. Does somebody, does somebody actually check that? Like, do you and Alan kind of get together and make sure we have all the buildings on our property insurance?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, we did that a couple of years ago, and then since then, we've just been adding the properties we've acquired that are sold and rolled off. We do also kind of incorporate that in with our kind of bi-annual physical inventory for capital assets for the audit, so it is something that we do, if we're due to that this year, so, Mr. Mike's guys, I'm sure, it's still there, but, yeah, that is something we did a couple of years ago when we were...
Do you have a follow-up?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, kind of on the same lines as Alderman Jacob. Do we, as a regular course of business, like the school system, I think, has to have their buildings and everything appraised and looked at? Is that a requirement for the city, or is that just beholden to us, or of the insurance company? You know, it's kind of what you guys were already talking about, but just looking for a little greater clarity, who, who does that, when it gets done, and how do we know for sure that we have the right amount of insurance?
Mr. Wilson?
So, historically, it hasn't specifically really been a requirement in municipalities. Full disclosure, I don't know that the city's undertaken a citywide appraisal of all of the facilities since I've been here. We've just been kind of taking those and then choosing the typical inflation factor to increase those values. I know there are schools and some of the districts are a little more stringent with those requirements. Like I said, this was something we kind of knew was coming, it was on the radar as a possibility this year, so we knew that we might get a suggested increase or whatever. Again, by the time we heard about it, I think, not to refer to Mr. Jacob, but I think asking for an expedited appraisal in October for December renewal would have been more costly than it was worth, so.
Alderman Woods?
It's something we want to look at, we consider looking at that from the next year to prepare for that.
Follow-up, Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's certainly something to look at, how deep we look at it, or how much money we throw at it, but at least, you know, at a high level, have to look at, I mean, we're improving the building, the public works building.
That was, that was taken into consideration, though, right?
Yeah, but again, we've done work on this building, we're going to add more work to this building. We've added pump stations, lift stations, we've increased, we've worked on water towers, right? There's a lot of moving pieces, so I'm just asking that we, you know, have an eye on that, and I'm not asking you to go find out we can spend more money on insurance. At the same time, you know, if the building's worth $10 million, I don't want it insured for five, and then something happens. That's all, that's mine.
Alderman Jacob, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I will say, just being in the business, that, I mean, I know our company's recommendation to any type of, anybody that has any commercial properties is to do an appraisal every three to five years, and that's what a lot of the insurance carriers are doing. And I will say, from the ones that I see, there's usually a pretty drastic change. Basically, industry, you know, basically, everything I read and what's going on in the insurance market, like, over 60% of commercial properties, including municipal, and things are underinsured, so I think it would be something to look at in the future.
Question, Brad, so the policies, don't we have, like, on my house, I've got replacement cost. Don't we have that here with our buildings, or is it different with the municipal? Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, there are, but to Alderman Jacob's point, those are based on the historical unit of construction acquisition costs, and then just with some general industry inflators. You know, if those have been going at 3%, but the profit via commercial market has been going up 10% a year, how do you see it going to be a little bit of a disconnect there? No different than if, you know, how the prices go crazy, but you have, you know, the drivers of your home, see, the comps are on, you're different, there's going to be a little bit of a disconnect there, so.
Okay. Yeah, and I will, I will say that in the last three years, I mean, it's, the insurance market's been a hard market, and it's the increase in values of construction due to, like I say, supply chain, you know, worker, I mean, just everything going on. It's gone up more in the last three years than it has, I think, in, like, 25 years or something, just in the last three years, so definitely something to look at.
It's those contractors. Alderman Woods?
Thank you. And speaking to your value over there, if you improve the house, you need to tell the insurance company, or those might not be covered under market value, like you remodeled.
Oh, I pulled my permits, so don't worry, my taxes went up, I know that.
Well, that doesn't mean the insurance company knows.
Yeah.
We'll be checking those.
We'll have to check that out.
We'll be checking on those permits, too.
You can, you can look at them all you want. Any other questions? So, you know what? I don't, still don't have a motion. Need a motion?
Take that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Let's do a roll call on this one.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Ardi Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalon?
Yes.
And that passes. No items this evening. Items to be considered for future meetings, CIP, January 25th, budget, February 22nd. Any other items? Need a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.